I call this regular meeting of the board of, actually, yes, a regular, although under date, regular meeting of the board of selection. On Tuesday, September in the year 2021. First of all, both for conducting a hybrid virtual meeting. This meeting will be held both in person and virtual. The session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will generally remain unmuted. When speaking or voting, it will generally be keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public joins virtually and creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff for the first election. Public input should have been 24 hours prior to the meeting. We will check. If you are attending virtually in public comments, either one during the meeting, you can be submitted through the chat, wave your hand, and request the mic to be unmuted. Please include your name and address if you are addressing the board of selection. Thank you. First order, second order, business, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with its own liberty and justice for all. I'm here, but I just want to say, in saying the pledge, the Boy Scouts did a nice job this weekend on nine eleven. So, mentioned a few times, second order. Approval of the agenda, I move to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa. That's five. Approval of minutes, Board of Second Regular Meeting minutes for August 17th, 2021. I move to approve the Board of Second Regular Meeting minutes for August 17th, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? extension. Anybody, citizen? Any hands, any hands? You're none, old business. Archery, only hunting on Zegda Farm. So, we had a meeting. We talked about the Zegda Farm archery and the ability someday, board and have to expand that to other hunting. So, I move to approve the archery, only hunting for years for the Zegda Farm. You have to vote on the other. No, because that's all it's allowed to do as well. So, we're not allowing any other. Okay, so that's just what we're doing now. Right, alright. Anybody else?
I do have a comment or a question. And it says something about they have to know where campsites are and other things, but I don't see any of that listed on the map. So, would the, would there be more detail given to the hunters so they know where to avoid and that kind of thing?
Yes, the Tom McGrath and I are going to make sure anybody who's going to hunt the property will be walked on the borders of archery only. And then, we're also making signs that state that you're entering an archery only section of Zegda Farm. And the Boy Scouts, same time they've hunted, has been the north section of camp or camp. In how they can, in the north, trails are. Not on the fields where Ron Zegda is.
And where, and where the hunting will be allowed.
Right, the hunting's more in the woods and around field on the edges.
Thank you.
Getting here to do some B S A P, asking what it is. Might be your cat.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? I believe you, so. You'll have, you'll have to look up and see if she.
Okay. Is that a yes?
Aye, I saw it, thank you.
Okay.
Update COVID-19 employee policy. Well, here we are again. This now is new wrinkle, vaccinated, unvaccinated, and what we're going to do. So, Mark put together through research of other towns, talked to the town attorney, Mark, you want to?
The, the main thing one that he had is a clear policy of what designates a requirement to remain out of work. There's three different A, B, and C things that could happen. You test positively for COVID, or you have direct exposure to a positive COVID individual, or you're required to stay home to care for a child or a dependant who has COVID. The full-time employees will be granted up to 10 days of COVID paid leave without using their sick time. And part-time employees will be prorated based upon what they normally work three days a week. They would get six days equally, two week stay out for COVID. After that, the employees will be required to use a sick time vacation or personal time. And then, we also spell out different factors that might come into play with unvaccinated employees as well. And you think, we took the best from the towns that I researched and tried to make sure that we weren't too tough because we don't want people ignoring the fact that they're sick and exposed to someone and not being tested.
Yeah, it's 10 days enough when I was reading this.
Well, that's why they do have sick time.
They have sick time, so people wouldn't lose their jobs though either. Let's say they had to stay at home, but they'd still have a job, they just wouldn't necessarily get paid.
Right, it could be unpaid.
Now, 10 days, 10 days is work days. Because it says on the next page what to do, stay home for 14 days after your last contact, first from a COVID-19. So, you have two weekends in there. Whether you go out on a Wednesday, there's two weekends, we count 10 days work days. So, they're really out for 14 days.
Can keep, the people could still work from home.
Yes.
Because that may, that may solve any problem.
Some employees have the ability to work from home.
So, if they could, I could, yeah, then that would solve any problems like that.
Some employees do not, like public works, you can't work from home, but that's not true. Oh, Lisa has a question.
I apologize for the cricket in my room. My question would be, is so if a public work employee had an exposure, but they could work alone and do like maintenance somewhere, could they not go to work?
That would be negotiated through the health district because that, that does come into play. Some employees towards their end of their quarantine with wearing masks and being segregated from the other employees might be able to come back and do specialized work. So, that'll be a case by case basis between the health, Eastern Health District and my office.
But what about testing every, getting three negative tests in five days or six days or something?
Well, that can shorten up your, your timeout.
So, who decides if they get the test or?
Health, we will, we'll work with the contact manager at the health district and we answer all the questions and then they design the return.
So, we've abdicated our role to the health district and we, we follow what they tell us we can do?
It works according. Bernadette's already gone down this road with her employees, but she's calling the health district. They ask questions, we put them in contact with the employee, the managers stay in the loop, and my office stays in the loop. And then, we document everything. So, it, it's not fun. It, it's, when this hits an apartment, it can, it can really eat up your debt.
Oh, yeah. I guess I would just say, just in some cases, they could be about the amount of time to get, I mean, I don't know, but you set a policy, you set a policy, but.
Well, up until now, we had, you started a sick day right away. So, last year, we covered everything, but now, as people have had the ability to get the shot and there should be less COVID positives, we're transitioning to a ten day, is my recommendation.
And it's two weeks. But how many 10 days exposure can you have?
Just you somebody can, because you're out for two weeks, even though you may not be sick, that's kind of what I was thinking. But you have to, because that's the guideline.
But you see exposure and showing signs. And it has to be serious exposure.
Okay, so you're not talking about they went out to dinner and they feel fine and they can't come to work for 10 days?
Right, they have to be with someone who's COVID positive, closer than six feet, more than 15 minutes, and have an extended exposure. You know, you, you hugged your sister and.
She got sick.
She came positive, now you have to go get tested. And you have to get tested between three and five days after exposure.
But you don't necessarily have to take the 10 days because you only.
If you come up negative, then it might shorten it to just that.
And I think this is why we're working in partnership with the health district because honestly, you know, was it 14 minutes or 15, you hugged her, she coughed, I, I don't need it, to be honest with you. We'll, we'll work with the, the health department and we will, we can revisit it. I don't think we're going to have habitual, you know, exposure people, I, I don't, I trust it.
You haven't had it.
Right, exactly, so.
So, you haven't had problems.
So, we're setting a policy, we're voting on it, Mark, there's no, no thinking. So, I move to approve the COVID-19 updated employee policy presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Is she muted for, she muted, hold on.
You're muted.
My bad, I, I vote no, there are things about the policy that I, I can't agree with.
Okay, so, form one. Saying that. Becker Center, right, is that next?
Yes.
Becker Center, I move to approve the Becker Center procedure for reopening. So, a bit of homework to read on this, you're doing our homework, let's do it. Tell me about it, and we have Bernadette, if we have any questions, Mark?
Yes, so Bernadette and I, we bring story and have the seniors who desperately wanted the senior center open. And we worked with our director of the Eastern Health District and took some of the best policies we saw at some of the other senior centers and came up with a strategy that the director was comfortable if we followed these five requirements that we would be making the senior center as safe as we could. And one of the main requirements is that you are, you show proof of vaccination.
So, Bernadette, I have a question for you, I want to pull you in on this because one of the phone calls numerous times that I received was a woman who was fearful that her mother, who needed to attend the senior center for just getting out, but also for food and stuff. There was concern about COVID and what was going on and, you know, are we just going to be providing meals on wheels, anything like that for people who are sick or unvaccinated or afraid or?
Absolutely, meal on wheels is available to anyone 60 years of age and older in Columbia. And whether they're homebound or they're fearful of going out in public due to COVID, meal on wheels, they can have a frozen drop, which is every Tuesday of five meals. It includes milk, butter, fresh fruit, juice, fruit cups. So, if they're, feel uncomfortable to come into the senior sunny, senior center for any reason, they're welcome to have meal on wheels delivered to them.
So, in saying that, thank you, I've read these things here, it all looks good to me. In saying that, I'm going to, so I move that we accept the Becker Center procedures for reopening discussion. I'm going to say, this is, it's open for those who want to use it, who want to be there. If they do not, if there is concern or they're not feeling well, by all means, we'll still take their phone calls and help them out. Are you, and I, I don't doubt that, that's why I asked about the meals. They do not have to attend the senior center. Because I will get phone calls. And that's fine, because I'll take the calls, but, you know, we're doing, we're doing our best.
Only question is, how do we arrive at the 50 people? It seems like a lot of people would.
Bernadette, based on how much room will hold and distancing, is a number shoes come from?
Can we lay it out so 50 people can be 60 or 40 or whatever?
Is, is 50 a good number? Every time I'm in there, there's probably 30.
Well, there are some occasions, we have duplicate bridge, we also have quilting group billiards and lunch happening all at the same time, where right before we just closed, we had over 75 people in the building, which is not a good idea. So, now I've, I've moved everything around so that my lunch crew is able to come in and get out before the large group of duplicate bridge comes in. So, we will never be able to go over the 50 maximum capacity, including staff.
Okay, and you can also move programs around or after the, delete one or something for the time. So, okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Five, always thank. Thank you, Bernadette.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, thank you for all your work.
Alright, do business, approval to install old firehouse siren on two poles on old, on the old fire department building, is that it?
No, no.
Were we putting it?
Put it on two poles for the current firehouses, there's some pictures here, they're not pushing, they're not blacking my guy. If you'd like to look at that and the passengers around, we'll appreciate it. And then, you got a little map in your packet?
Yes.
So. It's going to be, if you look at the firehouse on the street, you have right hand side, it's this cap property, somewhere in the vicinity of the stone wall that ends between the cap property and the town property, firehouse property, on that hill. If you, people approve it, then we have to go through a building because the building department zoning deems it as a permanent structure because it's going to have two utility poles in the ground. And then, the frame that was on the old firehouse is going to be modified to fit on a couple of cross members. And then, the siren, once it's put back together, we had to refurbish, we run on top, on top of that. So, the height ought to be, the total height ought to be no more than 15 feet high. And if you know more of the past members, you know.
I have a question because I'm looking at this and the parking for people to go visit this, the parking, if they can get into the parking sign, they have to walk across the departure lane of fire engines, emergency vehicles, and stuff like that. You have a couple of elderly people over there and all of a sudden, there's a, I mean, just give me a plan for that.
Yes, it probably isn't for that. It wasn't meant to be, I don't think it was meant to be visited as a, as a, as a, most people drive by it. We didn't, we didn't deal with people, I didn't feel the people going to come and visit them.
I move that we approve the installation of the old firehouse siren in the two poles on Route 167, Route 66, as a dedication or something to the club we volunteer for.
Do you know what it looks like?
Remember that?
Do that, you reached a hollow?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, remember, okay. Cool, so, okay, any more discussion?
We will work on a safety plan for that.
I guess, is there any, any plans, like, we, it's the memory of people who served, any plans, put names or something on it?
Probably just a general flag statement, something like that, not even put names on it, no. Because they want to always act with it, so it would just be a, you know, repetitive members. The past members are recognized in the meeting hall, memorial flag is named and then the unit has.
All those in favor? Aye.
Lisa said aye.
Thank you, thanks, Samantha. So, the fire department, 7.2, so. Yeah, so long range for the 10-year plan or two-month plan or?
It's a, it's a couple of things. I had a chat, I had like a narrative, I didn't add it to your packet, but if you'd like a copy of it, I mean, copy one of the same to kind of share. Should, yeah, please. We've been working with the town, with Mark, probably since the March timeframe. So, we've been going back and forth and as such, we were asked to get three quotes. So, in here, you'll see the quick summary, you can ask what's happened. The Conover Volunteer Fire Department is seeking to upgrade its 20-year-old audio and visual capabilities for the all volunteer memberships utilization. As we're finding with a number of things, and you'll see that in terms of building maintenance as well, our building is on the 20-year mark. So, we didn't have a lot of repairs because things were brand new. Also, with the advent of COVID, it's been a huge need for remote meetings. And in our case, a lot of remote classes are also being conducted now. And our current infrastructure is basically a projector and a laptop. So, it really is not, we have people holding their cell phones, we have people at home calling into their phone. It's very ineffective in terms of audio. We're planning to upgrade the large meeting room with bidirectional audio and visual capabilities. That means we're going to put a camera in as well so we can see the audience or have a remote projector, very similar to this, exactly. In addition, we want to take our small conference room and provide a kind of a compact offering like this so that from an emergency management standpoint, Jerry was supposed to be here, but if we ever needed to have a large hurricane or some kind of event, we needed to have emergency management post, they could, they could operate independently in there. I think we'd like to replace our building-wide paging system. As you can imagine, we have the old speakers that are in the ceiling, they have the knob on it, you have to turn it, you got to figure all the things twisted, it's really not effective. Justification is because NFPA regulations for firefighters, Connecticut Department of O E M S, they're increasing our need for online education. So, they're saying we have to get continuing education, a lot of these classes are online. What we'd like to be able to do as well as offer classes, but also have instructors who could be remote, give the class in our location, saving us money in terms of travel expenses. We started with a company by the name of Rockwell Communications. We like them, they're a very good reputation, one of our members worked with them at U of, I'm sorry, University of L.A. And when I spoke to Mark, he said, try to go to Novus Insight, Novus is the guys that provides the support here. And Valley Communications is a third company that I've worked with over a quarter. As you can see, Rockwell is coming in at 27, 627. Valley Communications said, we're at 75,000, and we don't have all the details yet. And the firm that Novus recommended was an systems integration firm, and they were at 64, too. The only reason I put the subject to final approval is we started this process in the March timeframe and there's a chip shortage that's affecting just about everything. And they can give us a really hard price, but they're pretty comfortable with that 27. It was 24 at one point, but in, in going through the updated quote as recently as last week, they think they can handle that, but we have not given a purchase order because it takes so long to get this thing. So, basically, that's our first request and the chief will get into some more long-term capital. So, once again, three elements, speakers throughout the building, AV in the large conference room, and bringing a complete solution, very similar to this, into the small office room. So, we have two power look abilities, and that's a new system. Thank you. Any questions? I have copies of both of them, or Mark?
Only you will do, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
So, then, our next few topics, we have, I'm just going to jump down actually to the floodgates and driveway rings. And then, sorry, Chief, is that on this?
I don't know who you're.
Oh, sorry, the agenda, sorry, I was looking at, I was going to save the capital for the last time. The, the floodgate is just a, a recommendation I'd like to, to bring, bring forth to the board about some of our instances that we had at Parker Bridge Road. We recently had the young lady get trapped in her vehicle. Unfortunately, also, we've heard the story about the state trooper that passed away in the floodwater. We have a significant issue at Parker Bridge Road and at Sanders Road where it seems to always flood. My recommendation or thought to the board would be possibly installing some type of floodgates that we could control, kind of similar to Manciel Alad Dam has. We have a lot of people that respond to these emergencies, equipment, so, money, liability. Yes, gate like a, like a metal gate that will close the road to prevent people from continuing to drive either not knowing or thinking that they can get through. I did talk to the, the chief in Coventry, obviously doing the plan with Coventry to put the gate on each side. I think the, the, the cost could be very minimal for the liability and the safety that it could ensure. Maybe even just like a, a combo lock on it that both sides, both towns or departments have that once you open one side, obviously, you can open the other. But just a, a recommendation and a thought that needed the board would want to consider for, for going forward. Because we have had several instances of vehicles, we've gone to emergencies there for people and that's.
Have all these vehicles bypassed cones that were in the road?
Yes.
Really?
And I, I personally was saying I've cones with Assistant Chief Lewis. I found the package store. The state put the signs up, big road closed sign with cones and go right around.
People go right through it.
No, by the way, did I do, one of your, your cones were down or wherever the state put it up, road closed, it just fallen over, I got out of the car, put it back up. And, you know, I, I put it up, I go back to my car, two cars will buy it, I'm ridiculous, so.
Remember the bridge we, we made construction country and they went over the bridge in Beddall River?
But the problem that happens is that people can see the yellow lines. If the water's not moving, it's very, very confusing to people. They say, oh, I can see the lines, but it's not deep, and that's the problem.
Okay.
And then, the, the, the driveway clearance ordinance, I know we have, the town has an ordinance for new properties and new developments about clearing, having the driveway clearance so that emergency apparatus and stuff can get down, down the new driveway. What we're seeing, seeming to find is that some of the current citizens up, we've gone, gone to their, their house for emergencies and we can barely get the ambulance down, let alone maybe a fire trucker for an emergency. We've started with, obviously, some like social media, just kind of a, more of a campaign to, to notify the citizens that you guys, that they need to keep their areas clear so that we can get to an emergency if they have one.
At least a clear dump of vehicles or snow.
Trees, like to the trees, overhang, the, so, I didn't know if there was something that we want to go to town and the board wanted to look into, maybe expanding that ordinance to current driveways again, is we start damaging vehicles, expenses, or again, just not being able to get to some. to current driveways again, is we start damaging vehicles, expenses, or again, just not being able to get to someone's residence, just, um, another recommendation.
It would be tough to enforce.
I think you would at least get a letter saying, we, you're on notice, we cannot get down the driveway, you need the ambulance.
Rob, when the FedEx man said to me, this is the last time I'm coming down here unless you trim the trees, I trimmed the trees.
That will get their attention, Amazon.
Yeah, tell people Amazon's not gonna come anymore, that'll be done in.
Yeah, exactly.
If we could piggyback also to the sign, I know we tried that for many years.
The what?
The sign. Signs, remembering, there are a number of driveways that are next to each other, so they're technically adjacent, and there'll be two flag lot houses, so you have four houses. And it, it's, it's part of the bigger picture, maybe a campaign about, let us find you and then let us get to you. It's kind of like step one is as we're driving down eighty-seven, it's dark, it's raining, it's very tough to see, and then, you know, we're not asking to fix puddles, that would be way too much, but even that becomes a problem.
Right, but.
We'd like to have.
Puddles on the driveways?
Everything, I mean, anything from branches to puddles.
Yeah, no, I get it, I get it. Yep.
We can start with the view, a digital, that we could, selling targeted houses, we know the problem.
Um, and then our, our last is the, talking about our, our future budget and going forward. There's been discussion about the ARP and then grants for, for funding our future capital project, um. I just, I just want to make you aware that we, we go for grants, the department has independently written their own, um, I say the town and the citizens, close to a half million dollars in the past twenty years through, through grant. And, and we do the best that we can, and a lot of those higher number grants have been to the federal government that are designed to make departments whole. Bring them up to a more level playing field throughout the, the US is, is kind of how they look at it. And to get those grants again, with our financial situation here in town, we're very fortunate, which is a good thing, but kind of puts us on the back burner for some of the, the bigger grants in the, in the federal system. Um, I just don't want to see the, the town or the department having to rely on grants going forward, um. But again, they're a benefit, and they, they help us out tremendously, and hopefully when we, we keep getting that, if we can, and they can then go, that money can then go into another project in town that, that could use it. But I, I'm afraid of always having to possibly go to the, to the town or going to a, our general fund budget to, to pay for things. Um, if it's not budgeted or forecasted, uh, appropriately, with some of the, the needs that we know are coming up, it is a large project.
Um, I think. A piece of that we're at is, is a twenty-year lifecycle, so if we lose a million dollars, you just take that, and we're fill a spreadsheet out, you want to see all those fifties lined up for the twenty years. Um, and then you have staggered, obviously you're staggered, we have the current, uh, unit that we got, we take care of the ambulances with our funding through ambulance billing, but we want to make sure that when you look at twenty years, if we pick a number, say we pick a million, we have to keep an eye on that to see if the prices are going up, because if the prices are going up within ten or fifteen years, we may have to make adjustments there, so. Just like we're having a very good discussion on the building now, it's maybe we have to have some working sessions with respect to capital deployment when it comes to the large apparatus. Because they're all expensive, the tanker is closing in on its, uh, twenty-year mark in the next few years, um, and we have an older engine, and so it's, it's an ongoing process. In addition to things like the apparatus, the, the things you put on your back, you know, the air bottles, all that stuff's expensive. And we want to make sure that we're giving the town the information they need so they can do the planning in an appropriate manner.
Okay, so I have seen long-range plans, and I know that we have or have talked about, we should have, if I remember it, uh, money every year set aside for fire department stuff. So, I'm all, I'm all for putting aside X amount of dollars to be able to spend incrementally when those things come up. I have no problem with that, that's, that's smart budgeting at night, you know, and we will look at the cost of things. I, I don't remember. Well, there they are, I don't know when this was been.
Well, that was, uh, that's what we've been working on, if, if things have changed, it would modify this.
Okay, so, have we in fact been putting money away for things, Beth?
Yeah, uh, I believe so, no, we shouldn't put some money away. Um, actually, no, we were working, there's no way to put in this year's budget because we were working on the, I don't remember, the, the rescue truck.
Yeah, the rescue truck.
We're finishing the rescue truck.
So, we're finishing the rescue, so nothing went in this year.
But, but that hundred and fifty, we took out of the general fund to be able to finish the ju- rescue truck, was in lieu of the hundred and fifty going into that program.
And next year, there's some money in the plan, put money in the next, I have here for next forty years, and I, here is a big bump of two twenty-five, love to look at it, but there is money going the next four years, funding for the fire.
And we're, here's, here's, I'm gonna make a statement, there's money going into a fund forever. Unfortunately, that's what we're, that's what we're really planning and looking at, because something's gonna come up in age and stuff, uh, every year or every five years, so.
And as we, as we did with the rescue truck, that original target date was about eighteen months prior to the actual date, because, you know, the town said we'd like to, you know, can we defer that for a year or two? And we said, sure, now, we just infer more maintenance costs. If the tires hit a certain age, they have to be replaced, they are not likely to lay bicycle tires, just to replace tires on a piece of apparatus is unbelievably expensive. And where we, they can have almost brand-new tread, but they still have to be replaced, it's that kind of budgeting, so, yes, we can bump it out, but we want to make sure we communicate that, well, if we go out two years, we're gonna have to put tires on it.
Yeah, and that's all, yeah.
Just communicating.
Yep, definitely, absolutely, that's all we're, that's all we're looking for is keep that dialogue open.
So, uh, okay.
Steve, have you worked with the grant writers at Exhaust, the possibility of a grant for the air bottles and the forship truck?
So, I've been in contact, started, started the process with, uh, a grant company.
Okay.
Having solidified or, or even signed a contract with them, um, again, it's weighing the, the options, uh, you can get a couple of grants for five hundred thousand dollars here and there, is that worth paying a grant writer?
Yes.
Or paying someone for, for the, the larger ones, which, un- unfortunately, which we've still tried, and we, we've written for before, is the, the larger FEMA, um, AFT grant, so.
But remember, I gave you that, they put a lot more money out there than normal. And towns all around us in the last round did get rewarded in the normal, um, firefighter.
Yep.
Grants, including Bolton, who got their packs and.
Yeah, the air, like, we, we have that, that was awarded a grant from twenty years ago, um, we would still be probably using almost the same grant and, and submitting it again, obviously tweaking it to, to as a, the appropriate effect for now, um, and seeing if we can, can get that, we just know that something like that expires on, on said date, and we just want to make sure that there's a contingency that it's, it's still planned for.
We always are gonna plan for what you need, Chief, but I do agree with Mark, and I told him the same thing today about grants that we talked about, so, yesterday. I want a name to the person responsible of writing the grant, and I want to know when it's supposed to be submitted and documentation that it has been submitted. I understand, I've said to Mark that somehow if you need money for grant writer, would, you know, come to us with the proposals and company, and we'll take a look at helping you out, because if you have to write X amount for two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the air breathing apparatus, if we get that and we have to pay ten grand for the grant writer, you know, if they get a percentage of it, I, I think that's good business.
No, no.
But work with us, go back to the communication, I don't ever want you to go, you know what, we're not going for it because we're worried about it because we got it twenty years ago, forget it, let's go for it, you, you, you know. So, that's my opinion, but I'd like to know who's in charge, who, you know, uh, who's doing it, or if you have a company to hire, talk to us about it, and we'll see what we can do.
And can you, uh, contact, if it was Bolton, I think it was, was rewarded for the air packs, can you contact that chief and get a copy of their grant?
Yes, I know, well, I can definitely see what they do.
Shoot it to us, we'll play drives and.
And, and, and the other thing you can say is, hey, Chief, we got a grant for this three years ago, if you're, if you're thinking of putting in a grant, we'll send you our grant, we, you know, change the name, that's all we ask. I mean, uh, our best, uh, our best combat manuals were the ones we stole from other sheriffs who just went through free, free training, so. But remember, change the name, we forgot.
And you don't reinvent the wheel.
So, okay, yeah, I'm looking at the numbers here, and I understand it, and I, 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 you know, in the next month, less than a month, I'd like to put together a five-year plan that's really reasonable and, or realistic.
So, what we need to know is, what we have on file, is this still ongoing? Which we need that date to be current.
Yeah, okay, all right. Any other questions, anything else for us?
Okay, thanks. And hopefully, it's only smoking. That's what all the silencers. There's something in the chat. I've got a quick, yes.
Okay, uh, capital projects, American Rescue Plan.
What's that?
The next one?
Yeah, so that one, three.
Yeah, so, we met, I think we just talked about this last time, where are we on the American Rescue Plan, we've talked about some things. We really have to talk about, uh, Beth just said we need to put something in and go with an initial project. Um, and looking at all this stuff, this is ARP under projected spending balance and stuff, there's a lot of maybes there, but really, I, 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 and Beth's not still on the line, but we've talked about the, um, Red Park, New Pavilion up there. It's a ready to, there's plans already drawn and stuff, we approve it, I think we're going to, we can move on that, there's already, uh, timeframe that Beth was talking about, our Director of Public Work, that they can start and do some of the work. Where's the new pavilion?
Right opposite the playground, in between the softball field and the children's playground.
You're keeping the old one? Yes. Yeah, the addition up there, it's gonna be a little bit larger than the one that's down near the Little League, uh, that will remain down there for use. The one up top will be handling the soccer fields, the girls' softball field, like, the playground area. The boys' big roof league up there, um, people have ADA bathrooms, two of them, um, some storage areas and for the cooking apparatus, there's nothing, nothing of my fire will cook inside the building, they'll have to do it outside on grills and stuff. But I think that, uh, and it'll have an overhand to cover some picnic tables so people can get out of the sun and have a place to, to pull a drink or a hot dog or something, use the, use the facility. So, I would like to get authorization from the board to move forward on that, there's some other things that we want to talk about, DPW items, certainly the fire department items, set public safety and stuff, but, uh.
Will this become the American Rescue Plan?
Yes, so the main, in American Rescue, the main guarantees almost are anything that improves air quality through air ventilation and air HVAC, which is heating, cooling, and ventilation. So, we're working on two projects at the firehouse right now. We're hoping that'll qualify for ARP, and we're working, getting quotes for the town office, and, um, remember that.
Senior Center?
The school?
Not the senior center, it's still working.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
The school has made a request, but theirs is very complicated and very expensive, uh, but the minimal request is to upgrade the electrical enough so that they can put HVAC in the A wing. Um, to do the whole school's over five mil. But to do the A wing is a little under a gun.
So, you know. So, there's a lot of things, it's an ARP on here, I, I, I'm reluctant to say let's do something with, other than what we've talked about with the firehouse, let's go and do some more of these things, because I want to see what happens if we get together, write a few grants, get some, get none, whatever, it'll give you an idea of, because if you start spending money on something, you won't get a grant for it, they'll say, well, you already started, it means you must have the money for it, so that's a little bit of time constraint.
Also, they're finalizing, the treasury hasn't totally finalized all the rules, they're still taking input, and they haven't started having public hearings for small towns yet, that's coming, they've been doing the cities first. Um, and then I'm getting, printout some frequently asked questions, I forwarded one to Beth tonight, and Stephen, we're starting to read everything, but what, what it's coming down to is if you can make, if you can put in writing your thought process of why you think it's justified within the rules, and that's submitted to the auditors, the auditors have to eventually agree that you've, are within the guidelines in the Red Rescue Plan. And with Red Park, that might mean you've, you can prove that you've expanded the use of the Red Park, and more people are outdoors, and more people are safe. With the HVAC, more people are breathing cleaner air, there's better ventilation, so that's within the rules. The firefighters, we have to prove that whatever we purchase will keep them safer and protect them from the COVID virus when they go on calls, and they'll have better equipment to save more people, so all these things we've got to write up, and we'll learn as we go from other successful towns.
So, right now, I'd like to, uh, you know, see your, hear your thoughts, and then vote on moving forward with maybe the Red Park Pavilion up there. We, our word is not that, we'll bring it to a town meeting, we'll discuss it, we'll show them, um, but honestly, I, I think this board is going to decide with influence and make the judgment call on how we spend the ARP money.
The public hearing is for the town.
Yes, public hearing, sorry.
Board's selectmen, five pack, get their feedback, and then back to the board's selectmen with a public hearing for final, voting as we go forward, authorize projects.
So, you need to make a motion, move forward on the, uh, Red Park Pavilion project.
And HVAC project.
Which ones now?
HVAC, so that would be the town hall and the fire department HVAC and air exchange systems.
In, in moving forward, you're scheduling a town meeting?
We'll move forward by recommending that to the five pack, and then come back to a public hearing and a final vote for the board's selectmen, because we'll, we'll just keep taking it step by step, because this could take years, and I think you're, you're just gonna kind of inch along as we go. We have to have this completed, all POs cut by two thousand twenty-four, and off, everything done and extended by two thousand twenty-six. But, but any project could, a big project could take two years.
Remotion, I need to say.
I think what you said, that you, the, uh, concession team, handicap bathroom, and HVAC, um, projects within the town hall and the, we've got fire department and their exhaust exchange system.
Okay, so, I made a motion that we, uh, I set a course to put forth plans to, uh, use the, the American Rescue funding for the, um, Red Park New Pavilion with plans with, including, uh, two bathrooms and eating area, as well as HVAC for the town hall and the Columbia Volunteer Fire Department Exhaust Exchange System. Any special? Well, is that, isn't there two things that could follow us?
Yeah, there's the exhaust exchange and the HVAC.
Yeah, no, who's?
And the town hall.
And the exhaust system, uh, excuse me, the HVAC at the firehouse, I didn't have that, okay.
Is that, is that the same thing where it's, is it come up that the HVAC and then, so that's the, the heating and cooling system?
Yeah.
And then the?
Exhaust.
Engine exhaust.
The truck exhaust.
Yes. It was four things. Yes.
And then the AV is not. And then the AD is not included in that.
Well.
What?
That could be included.
What?
Audiovisual presentation that's on made because that would be for training all the volunteers to be. COVID trained.
That's the twenty-seven thousand five, whatever it is from us.
Yes. Yeah, that could be a priority.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to add the audiovisual of the firefighting. So, any more discussion? All those in favor?
At least if this is.
So we'll move that, send it to five pack of, uh. Input, right?
Yeah, and then actual public hearing and a final vote.
Uh, town beach concrete pier repair. So I moved authorize a town to execute a contract with Kane Underwater Services to do a concrete repair in town beach pier. Discussion. So what's happening is underneath the pier. Some of the concrete is giving way, whether it's the, the flow of the water through the lake, whether it's the speed of the boats that are passing by. That's why we went to the no way buoys that were put out there or are putting out there. But the bottom line is. The, the foundation of the pier is crumbling away. Yes.
I think it's more the sand is undermining.
Yes, it's the, the sand is moving, it's, it's, um, it's unearthing the underbelly of the pier and that. For some reason, that also, the concrete is, is pulling away or breaking away.
So that one's probably lost.
About six years old.
Yeah, the other one lasted thirty years or so.
So we went out, uh, for bids and Kane Underwater Services came in, um.
Okay, so Kane Underwater is who we contracted as well to do all our warnings, underwater analysis and upgrade our warning field. Uh, the other companies we contacted were not interested. They mostly all we do, um, ocean construction and bay. Saltwater. So the only firm that had the skill and, um, background to do this project right now is Kane Underwater. And we thought their, their quota not to exceed nine thousand was reasonable for the size of the project.
Is that written up to fit the sum? This is the estimated.
Well, it says total project estimate not to exceed nine thousand.
So because there are caveats here because of the way, uh, prices are going up and up and up, uh, products and.
I would recommend that with this project that you kind of waive any other bits and quotes. Because I think you have to get at least a couple.
Yes, so the reason the board's looking to have to vote on this is we only have one bidder. I'm required by your purchasing order and said two verbal quotes over how much? That's, that's the audiovisual system. Under ten thousand, we need two per hour.
I don't know anything about concrete, just to make sure that the same thing.
That's right.
Oh, Lisa has a comment.
My, my question is, so didn't we do this style of pier? Because it was less disruptive to the, the lake bed than our previous type of pier. But it seems to me that if we're gonna end up doing a whole bunch more work, it's actually being more disruptive to have to go in there again. And God only knows in six years are we gonna do it again. Should, i- is a redesign, a look at a redesign in order?
Or, what did that pier cost?
I don't know.
Oh, fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand.
So, I mean, or is it the concrete?
You know what, it's also, it's just the sand and stuff. Kind of, you know how when you step on the beach and the wave comes in and the sand all goes away.
Possibly the footings need to go deep enough and the soil that it's sitting on has undermined.
Like just my thought, it's just evaluate what happens. So we've, we've got to fix it, obviously, but just make sure that the same thing doesn't happen again.
Well, I think as they do this project, they're pouring the concrete lower, enjoying this. As they get into this project, they're gonna learn a lot more.
Mark, Mark? Mark, can I, this is Jason.
I, I didn't know that was you.
This is Jason.
Noah Sad.
Jason Noah Sad, um, so the concrete is not actually failing. Uh, it's being under, the, um, lake bed below it is being undermined. Um, the concrete is not showing signs of failure. Um, so. This project should be to make sure that the lake bed, uh, stops moving. Out from underneath the concrete that was poured. Um, I think somebody mentioned that, uh. Potentially it wasn't, uh, deep enough to begin with and that's probably, um. That's probably the mistake that was made. Um, but, uh, the, the structure of the, of the pier. Is, uh, solid. Uh, it, it was not something, once I investigated it. Um, something that I wanted to, uh, condemn for this current year. Um, lot of rebar in there if it was actually done as per plans. Um, it's a solid, it's a very solid dock. Um, it just, uh. We're losing some of the, uh, lake bed underneath it and it needs to be shored up so that it doesn't become a not solid dock.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Lisa.
If I recall, the old pier had underneath was kind of solid. So it stopped any wave action from passing underneath it. Maybe I'm wrong, this is what I, what I seem to remember. When they did this pier, they did piles so that now the water can pass underneath the dock. And is that not where the, the, so now you have a current that's able to ha- happen that wasn't able to happen before?
These are not piles. These are, um, these are solid walls on, on a large pad. That was poured on the, uh, on the lake bed and, uh, rather than digging down with piles. Um, to far lower than where we lower the water, um, over the winter. Uh, it's, it's just on top of the lake bed. So as you lower the water. Uh, as there's currents created by either wave action from boats or wave action from storms. Um, it's allowed sand and, and, and the lake bed to, uh, erode from underneath the, uh. The bottom footing, which is just a large pad, a twelve inch thick, um, pad.
Okay. I guess the bottom line is, is this gonna fix it?
Yeah, I mean that, yeah.
Um, Jason, do you feel this will fix the problem?
I feel that it'll fix the problem. Uh, if, I mean, the, the level, the level to which we. Put in the fill and the, um, the structural fill and the, and the concrete underneath it. Um, if we decide to lower the lake bed further in the future, uh, or the lake level further in the future. Or if we continue to have, um, you know, wave action from in- incredible storms. Um, you know, this is a fix, not a, um, we're, we're not going down five feet deep. Um, underneath this, um, underneath the current foundation. So that we can guarantee that nothing else is gonna erode in the future. Um, obviously. If you don't lower the lake as much, you're gonna get less erosion at, at the, at that far end of the pier. Which is where, where the erosion is happening. Um, you know, but everybody wants the lake lowered. Um, so they can do repairs, which we need to do this time. Um, so. You know, it's, it will repair the, it will repair the problem, but there are, it, it is a repair. Not, not a, um, a good new, you know, hey, let's, let's put, let's drive. Pilings down, you know, eight feet into the ground and, and, and get to ledge or something like that, which would be, obviously, uh. Um, that would end the, the discussion of whether, uh, you're gonna undermine the pier.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I made a motion to contract Kane Underwater Service. All those in favor? Close. Thank you. Uh, Columbia Lake, an application to install a new warning for Mr. Michael Schalise, Board's Team Lake New Park West. I moved to approve the application for installing a new. Fourteen Lake New Park West. Contingent and common recommendation is set forth by all that, so looking at that. Review is recommended, all that, course, that's currently approved. So, just putting out a warrant. One property nine thirty-five feet away from each side, approximately hundred feet offshore, as per our Lake Management Guide says, so. Those in favor? Yeah, all those are, any more discussion, any discussion, all those in favor? Okay, uh, resignations. Resignation from William O'Brien, New Services Committee. I was surprised to get this. I, I know this has been Bill, one of Bill's, uh. You know, heartfelt projects and stuff. I, I, I understand being so overwhelmed with things that are going on in life. And it's not our business, but the bottom line is he's done a tremendous job and he's gotten people involved that normally wouldn't be involved. And he's asked for things for people, for youth services and, uh. Always been very, you know, smart and responsible and. You know, it's what, what we need for the people growing up in the community and stuff. So I'm sorry to see this, but Bill, you wanna? Talk it all to him or what?
I think it's based for itself.
Okay, um, they'll miss you, but I'm sure that if somebody picked up the phone and wanted to pick the brain about something. I'm sure you'd still be there.
There is a meeting in November, I'm leaving January first, but there's me in November. You know, issues that are coming up in terms of revisiting issues that we had in the past in terms of, uh. Our affiliations with, uh, AHM and everything, so be prepared for that, you know. Um, I did talk to Mark about it a little bit and there is, um. I know we had done a study a while back and a lot of the questions that are being raised were addressed at that point in time, so I was hoping that we could find a study and address. You know, put together some of these issues.
Okay.
Because we really do have a wonderful arrangement with, uh, AHM right now and, uh. You know, one of the biggest assets that you have is having, um, Cherie Riberde Lance over at Porter School. Doing a wonderful job here, so I really hope that, you know, we can maintain those relationships and, and support her.
Well, thank you. I look forward to, uh, to hearing all about it and stuff, believe me, uh, so.
And when Ken gets back, I'm letting him do this, sir.
I remember that discussion a few years ago, more than a few years ago and. Yeah, we're still with him, so, um, nevermind. All right, very good. So I moved that we accept the resignation of William O'Brien, New Services Committee. All those in favor?
Our administrators report. Uh, the, none of the damage from, uh, Ida was mainly, um. Two driveways and, uh, part of the bridge on Pine Street. And, um, there was a lake road, uh, damaged, the entire driveway was destroyed in a lake. We had a minor damage to gravel, driveway was eroded on seventy-five double day and thirty-one Pine Street had minor gravel. Driveway erosion, um. The, uh, rest of the town fair, as well as can be imagined with that much rain coming through, uh, as it did. And, uh, Public Works did a stellar job. I mean, it's amazing that they've got Pine Street repaired as fast as they did. With just their. Yeah, now they're gonna go on the other side of the guardrail here, that's back, um, and finish backfilling to the head wall, uh, next. Beth, do you have anything more to add with Ida and our, where we are to date in bringing the town back?
We basically had the two main areas, the one on Pine Street and also Thompson Hill where we lost a portion of the road. Um, both Pine Streets nearly complete, Thompson Hill, we just have some paving to do. Um, we should have all the repairs complete by either the end of this week or first thing next week. And I've documented, um, the costs associated with that and we'll put in, uh, with FEMA. To see if our county will qualify.
Purpose to be commended on the, uh, fine work over on Pine Street, but you were raised there after a quick and have done really, really well.
It was shocking how much damage the water did.
There's the two docks at the lake were totally underwater.
Right, yeah. Uh, thank you, Beth. You did, uh, tell everybody, the fire, the board said, thank you. They did a tremendous job and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Beth, don't leave. We're gonna invite you into a second session at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was some, in addition to that, we're having a meeting, we have an opening birthday.
Yes.
I guess there'd be more. Um, there, there's some lessons learned coming out of Ida and, uh, for the emergency, um, and we'll keep abreast of that.
This is always, this is totally unexpected. I thought everybody could break out what I saw.
Yeah.
But there's always stuff.
Uh, some correspondence in there, take a look at it. So I, I, I want to approve fourteen thousand nine hundred eight dollar transfers. And assisting, uh, now building inspection facilities maintenance. To cover the cost of the general supplies for facilities maintenance is two fifty-five. For lake management to transfer, cover the cost of the budget for gate monitoring marine patrol salaries. Two hundred dollars. Two thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars for administration to cover the cost budget. For the town of Columbia pension, with more staff eligible this year, you know, just on anticipated cost for the planned reinstatement. Which was charged by power retirement. Is that the old company?
No, no one.
Two, uh, two thousand two hundred dollars from contingency for legal notices. The unbudgeted cost for legal notice app posting the town charter revision. Were mandated to do, uh, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars to cover tax collection, unbudgeted validator replacement. Fire one's outdated and need a repair. Nine thousand contingency to cover unbudgeted cost of concrete prepared to the voided areas of the Columbia Lake Dock. The can, repair will be completed after the length drawn down in November. And nine dollars to cover the cost of budget for the building of field services leaving on. And nine dollars to cover the cost of budget for the building of field services leave. For a total of fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty, any discussion?
Are we gonna be, get to go back to, you know, the, the issues with the, uh, charter over, um, election of officials for Board Selectmen? Are we gonna kind of look at changing that?
You got a decision on it already. It's here, we can change it. You have a precedent, it's a legal precedent.
I think it's for, even for future ones, then.
It's still, the law's been interpreted to say that we, we, it can be done that way.
That we can, we can do it the way we did it, put, uh.
I'm just, so nothing has to be changed?
I think there'd be a lot of work, if, for just that. I think you gotta.
Okay.
Can I, I, I do have a comment on that, and that is, um, I actually regret greatly because Kate Hokinson had brought up that she thought the way we voted on boards and stuff was confusing. And it's not so much that it's confusing, it's that we can have the situation we now have, where it's really not fair. And I almost regret having voted and approved the charter as it is, because I think the, um, election of boards might need to be changed so that we never run into the situation where a board, eh, so what's gonna happen now is that, for instance, if the Republicans take over the majority this time, in twenty twenty-three, there's no way for the Democrats to try to take over the majority. And it maybe should have been changed, and if I had realized what was going to happen with this election, when we were doing the charter, I would've said we needed to revamp how boards were elected. And I actually will probably vote no on the charter question at the election, because of it.
I guess the question, what you're saying with the legal thing, it's not an issue, that we don't have to do it?
I'm thinking that the Democrats are facing the same situation in, uh, two to four years.
Yes.
A judge already interpreting it.
So we could run.
You, you have to, it's a finalized decision, you have precedent saying, this is the way you do it.
Democrats could take majority.
So we can run.
Yeah. It could, it could, it could, it could, but, but it, it's, the judge has decided that this is the fair way to do it, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't mess around with it as far as going with the whole process of, if I were right now, considering where we are with it personally.
Well, it's more that Kate had brought up the point that we could reelect the whole slate every time. So instead of doing two years, two years, you could, you could almost, I was thinking you could have done it, so the first selectman was a totally separate office, maybe do them every four years, and then on the opposite two, do the whole board, it's not, and the point was that she made is like, well, it's unlikely that everybody who would, would be replaced, they'd put up incumbents, it's not like the board would be turned over and it would be all new people. And she had a point, but she said, when she brought it up, it was about the confusion aspect, but, like I said, if I had understood the majority issues that we're having right now, and that in twenty twenty-three, it's only two Democrats up, and i- if we were to win the seat, it would be only two Democrats, and there'd be no way for the Democrats to try to change for the majority, try for the majority. It seems to me that it's just not fair, it would've been better, I think, if we had revisited how boards were elected. And I rea- I really regret not having looked deeper into it when we were doing the charter revision, because if we pass it, we can't change this for another ten years.
So what would you say? Because we can't change what we did or didn't do in the past.
Right, so I mean, we're kind of stuck, unless, of course, the voters vote it down, and then we get to revisit it.
Not true.
But, but because this went before a judge, the judge has ruled in the favor of the exchange, with the ability for either party to go after the majority, the precedent has been set. As it is written, it can be understood one way, how the judge ruled on it, which means no party will retain, will retain the majority without the minority party having the ability to set forth a candidate to change that. That's how the, the ruling went down, we put forth another person. So if it happens two years from now, the Democrats are gonna say, that's all right, you can read it how you want, but the precedent has been set by a judge that says we can put forth the candidates to be able to take back the majority. So we don't actually have to change the charter. The only reason to change the charter would be if in, in eight years, it, it's happening, and, and nobody remembers that the precedent was set, however, I think we're gonna be okay, so. Okay?
Let's see what Lisa's saying, though. I see what she's saying, it should be changed. But, you know, what we did to go.
I mean, that sets the precedent with the, what the court is saying, so it kind of is, except.
It's the same as changing it.
Yeah, right. So somehow put something there, you know, so that down the road, people remember something in the charter, this is a precedent that has.
Believe it, if it comes up and there's a, there's a discussion or people are gonna find a case to say, here is.
Right. It's pretty clear when we get, you just have to have to change your terms, you have to recycle the whole board every four years, and that looks awful.
Yeah.
That, like I said, the way to get this, to not have to wait ten years to write this, is to change, to vote, vote the charter down, just don't pass it. Then the Charter Revision Committee has to get back together, make some changes, and then set it up again next year. That's the only way, otherwise you're gonna wait ten years. And in two years, the Democrats, if the Republicans were to win the majority, the only people up are two Democrats, and there would no, be no way for them to try for the majority. And I, you know what, I don't like it anymore for them than I do for us.
It's not true. The first election, they took it all in three years, so you have four years.
That's in two years, in two years, beauty, beauty and Rob will be up, and they'll be the only ones up. And so there would be no way for them to take a third seat.
Thirty-four years is the majority.
There's no way we could get the majority back.
Right.
That way for, for years.
For, for, then the two years, there's no way for us to get it back.
Right.
Right, and, and I don't know if that's right.
That's true.
I, I just, that's, I, I, if we elected the whole board every four years, um, at one time, it would be an obvious thing, and, uh, make the first selectman and, and stand alone on the opposite two years, that's all. But that's, I mean, I'm just saying that's one way of doing it, but it's, it's a thought. There are other ways of doing it, and I wish I had paid more attention to what Kate Hokinson was saying at the Charter Revision Committee. And I will not vote for it, I will not vote yes, I will vote no for the charter revision.
Still have to put it in a paper, because it's going to referendum, right?
Yes.
So.
That's a, the whole town gets to vote on that, so all it has to do is not pass. And, not that I'd wanna do that again anytime soon.
To do is put something about pay as you go for trash in with it. All right. Thank you, any other discussion on the transfers?
Who do the transfers?
All those in favor of the transfers? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Beth, thank you. Refund, four thousand, ten, oh, wait.
It's been a month. Enjoy the draft meeting. Right.
We're gonna have two thousand, twenty-five hundred every month, though, but I make a motion, we approve refunds in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Even since.
Sure.
What do you, all those in favor? Aye. Good.
Always thanks. If, it's always possible.
And bill.
That's the house insurance that I know, you know, so they.
I make a motion, we pay bills in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Twenty-one regular, twenty-two, twenty-one twenty-two emergency, and twenty-one twenty-two regular.
Did Blue Bucks go up when they change, when they, the re-vote's over?
Yeah, it's not, it's not, uh.
I think we're selling their contract. Well, I think they're gonna honor what.
They have.
I'll accept the contract, yeah.
And then after that.
With, uh, OPU Max Black.
I have one question on the Columbia Views extra signature line, just what that was.
Um, we were getting, so, the number of pages of the views is determined by advertisement, number of advertisers, but we have a very, uh, good supply of authors that keep writing articles that they would like to be in, so we asked for a quote from the views to add an extra four pages for more articles, and that was in the budget. Uh, so we passed that extra cost per quarter in our budget.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills? Aye. Opposed, thank you very much. Party of the citizens, anybody on there?
Uh, nobody in chat.
Quick, you got anything to say? Board members comments? Okay, so I make, uh, at this time, I would like to suspend the original, the, uh, regular meeting and go, move to go into executive session.
Okay, so that's at eight twenty-two, and you have to motion to invite myself, I believe, and that one.
So I invented to invite Mark Walter. That was, and Beth, wrong.
And that was at eight twenty-two, and I'll stop recording. Fifty-two, we came out of executive session.
Uh, so we don't need to vote on anything, I move to adjourn at eight fifty-three. All those in favor? All right.
Let's go up this funny way, and he said, "Do you feel?"
You have a question, you're voting aye.
Look, she voted aye, all right.
Voted aye, now I gotta go find me a cricket.
The cat did vote, I saw the vote, cat raised its paw, honestly.
That's a cute cat.
It is.
All right. Night, Lisa.
Bye.